Now six thirty, call this meeting to Manchester by the seat. So I forward to order on gentleman.
Yeah.
For insanity. Yes, Anne's here.
And John is here.
Um, this meeting is being recorded. Um, and first. Item is public comments on non agenda items. Are there? Great, is there anyone?
Let's see them raising their hands.
Hey. Um. The I had don't have a chairman's report. I do have a suggestion for action items. Which is that. At future meeting, well before the town meeting. Um, I'd like us to consider. Um. Amendment to town by law about construct heavy construction noise to exclude the LCD. And that won't please people on Mill Street, but they are some distance from most of the. And construction. Often begins earlier than eight in the morning.
Yes. Commercial construction. Boston at six. Blasting would be inside.
No.
You're you're talking relative to noise specifically.
It's not general noise, this is an amendment. It lists a series of things that are noisy. I don't have the bylaw at my fingertips, but.
Heavy construction.
There's the uh traffic as well. Having.
I don't believe it includes traffic, but we can we can I will. Get it on the action item and I will I will make sure that everybody sees what the what the current bylaw is.
Also in the actions, I just um. We had a discussion on Ocean Street like a meeting or two ago and. Until I see something on a warrant, I I like to kind of keep it on our action item list like um so we. And then. I just had a memory fog and couldn't remember where we were with the electricity aggregation. Did we? Finish that negotiate that or?
And so it's it's in process.
Still in process.
So it we have the consulting firm.
Right.
They just sent me the other day a draft.
I'd like to see that on the actions just so because it was two almost two years ago that the voters approved it. So we have an action to do something and.
They did say, I think, or somebody said, some group said it was supposed to go a lot faster.
Correct, so the the DPU has 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 approved just November. A new streamlined process. So we're one of the first to go through that process. So we'll see how streamlined it is. We'll be optimistic.
Um, and the other thing I'd like to make sure is on this is the um. Water quality on Forster Road. Or lack thereof.
Oh, speaking of water, did we ever lift? We never lifted the water ban we had enacted. Um, is that something we should consider or are we still in a I haven't heard boo about the drought in weeks, so.
Let me check on that. I don't think.
Certainly put it on only because.
Right, right. So we may want to just keep an action to track, you know, when to lift it and so we don't forget.
Anything else for for us not to forget? Okay, um. First item on the agenda is the Manchester Yard Club alcohol license and. Is there any? The 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 Pope should be better about reminding us when they change their officers, which they do every two years. The the officers who had been listed were a couple of years out. Any discussion? Okay, um, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol license change of. What is it?
Discussion. Comments? Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
And says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, the next item is to eliminate parking within twenty feet of the crosswalk on Central Street by Seaside One. I think we all know what that one was about. Is there any discussion?
I had a well, just a question, I guess. If we move to that crosswalk back this way. Would we still lose the same number like up to the corner? Would we still lose the same number of spots?
My concern, I think, would be Chuck's concern is the vehicles exiting the driveway, yeah.
Okay.
What happens if we eliminated that crosswalk altogether? We have one near the side.
Chuck was not in favor of that because we already eliminated one up the street.
I'd like that one back.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's obviously your conversation.
But I think uh. Businesses are gonna lose one or two spots by uh. Following that twenty feet. Okay, which will impact uh the Bluebird and and Jack's uh the Babashack. But we and we already have a crosswalk just on the other side of the street. It have this discussion with Chuck. Uh, I mean, the two of them seem redundant as close as they are to each other.
I I think there's two issues. I agree with you. Um. I I think there's a short term need to do something right away, okay, which I think this um suggestion is directed. Uh, at but I also think we need a longer term look at where the appropriate place for a crosswalk is because I agree with you. That's not the place. It's I use it almost every single day. It is an extremely dangerous spot, even by eliminating the twenty. Foot sightline is still there's a curve. It's a bad sightline, and I agree with you. The one near Morse Court was. Honestly, I jaywalk and that's where I cross because it's safer. Um, so I do think we need a longer term discussion. But in the short term, I I agree, we kind of need to do something. However, my question is. In order to lose as few parking spaces as possible. It was recommended to us that we paint lines on both sides of that street to delineate where the parking spaces are. Because the number of parking spaces is purely a factor of who gets there first in the morning. And where they happen to park, and if they are not in the right spot, you automatically lose a spot. So a can of paint, okay? I mean.
I agree.
We're losing parking every single day for no other reason than we haven't painted.
You notice under the uh by higher.
Yes, you've got it marked off. Yep.
Marked off and that was the plan to do that on either side.
We need both sides, the parking spaces marked off, and then, Brian, I think that. Will alleviate some of the angst, but to your point, I I think we need a longer term solution.
But in the short term, like can we stop putting cones out there right now? Yeah, let's do that until we come up with that uh.
Yeah, cuz I I hate to see those spots go away, but I do. You know, again, we're gonna do something right now.
Well, we had an incident.
Right.
And we're lucky that was just ultimately was.
And that was with the driver under the speed limit.
So this is two spots. Which is on either side before the crosswalk going eastbound and before the crossbowed and before the crossbowed going westbound.
That was my recommendation.
Okay, right, so I understand.
The bigger issue is when you're on standing by the real estate office. When you're facing the harbor, that's where it's dangerous.
The westbound, the westbound traffic. Yes.
Yes, yeah, heading towards Beverly.
They can't see.
That you you can't see the cars coming. They can't see you. Crossing the other way is really, you know, it's it's not bad. But but when you're trying to cross towards the harbor, it's just taking you you're taking taking your life in your hands.
Yeah, so maybe down the road, that's not the best place for it.
Exactly.
As long as we have now until we can meet with Chuck. I would advocate just.
Let's do something now and then. Yeah.
And and including paint, I would really ask that we paint the lines. I mean.
Yeah, so previous boards had a different philosophy about painting parking spots, but.
But the experts, the experts we hired recommended that the the the, you know, so.
I mean, I put I I live there, okay? And if I'm the first one there, I try always I try to pull up as far up. That's my spot and I get pissed when someone else is there.
Not everybody does that.
But there are times when you and you like to come home and say, you know, look at this three wasted spots because they're not.
And there aren't a lot of people driving the little tiny smart cars who pack themselves in, right?
Pick them up and turn them around.
Okay, so I think what we want to do is put the cones in now to block off so that it's safe for the moment. Um, and get Chuck in. Probably for our next meeting. Um, with a plan to either remove a crosswalk or at least move one.
I would ask that he also consult with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee because they had sent a letter. Um, to Chief Fitzgerald. They may have already have suggestions on the appropriate placement for the crosswalk, so just. Okay, should be included.
What when does they meet next?
I'm not sure, actually. I'm not sure it's I they haven't had a meeting yet this month, so it's not posted. I think, yeah, I think he can um. I think, you know, Chuck can reach out to them in the interim and make sure that they he gets their feedback. Prior to our next meeting within the next two weeks, so. Because I think they have discussed it.
So there was one further west, right?
Yeah, there was by much.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the one that was removed that. Quite frankly, where I jaywalk because the sightlines are good, the sunshine, you know, depend. And I what I understand the reason why it was taken away is something about. The sidewalk not being wide enough to be ADA compliant. And that's why they took the crosswalk away, but I don't understand why we couldn't have. A non compliant ADA, you know, not ADA compliant crosswalk. Is that illegal? Or I mean, it was there. I thought it would have been grandfathered in, even though we paved over it or whatever. Um. That was my understanding why they took it away because the sidewalk was too.
Every crosswalk is supposed. Have a ramp up.
Some sort.
Yeah.
And that it's real narrow on the.
Yeah, well, I mean, how much of the street would we take away, you know? We had to make that sidewalk ADA compliant, but from a sightline standpoint. It's a it's a very nice spot.
Yeah, well, let's look at some options.
Yeah. Okay, um. The next. I I I think we have a resolution on that, basically. Um. The harbor regulation commercial moorings. And I'm sorry, I sent you forty seven copies, but people kept making these suggestions. And there, Don, you look at if you have lots of comments.
Well, I do, but then as I read it down further, further, then I say, oh, that comment up there doesn't apply. So it looks like I have a lot, but. Really, I just just have a couple, and thank you very much for. Working on this and I've put together so many versions. I mean, that's a bit of a time, but I understand you got. Comments and then more comments and say, hey, this makes sense. So I got uh just a really a couple and one is um. That I I I think all of these are moorings. You say service moorings up on the top, but I think it's never referred to as service mooring. There are moorings that are, I guess, are involved with the uh. That are involved with the uh. With the uh two marinas.
Yep.
But the question would be, right now, the payment is in full that also includes. The uh waterway permit.
The waterway permit is paid by the boatyards.
That's right. Now, my question is.
The the payment from the voter to the um. To the marina uh has to be invited at a certain date or the marina will say, okay, next person on the line.
Understood, so say the slips that are open, excuse me, and 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 behind Bluebird. Those people all have to pay a waterway.
Yes.
And that's separate from the slips, and I don't know who owns those slips.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so are those two different entities? In other words, the waterway bill is paid to pay to the harbor master.
Slips are, there's a difference in state law between slips and bottom moorings. Um, which is very significant. Um, if it's if you approach the boats from the land on a ramp, that's one thing. And when Manchester Marine first put in their um marina with the slips. They had had lands there and they dredged it. So that they could put in those slips. Um. Bottom, water bottom in Massachusetts belongs to the people and.
I think I think.
I I'm just wondering at the we've got two ways, two ways we're administering some moorings. Most of the moorings are we're paying to pay to the harbor master. And then for these. You know, the the number of moorings, whatever winds up in this provisional pool is being paid in a different way, and I'm just wondering if they can't all be dealt with in the same fashion. That's all but.
Two parts to the payment in the on the provisional. And part of it is for the tying it to the bottom. And part of it is the part that the boatyards are renting to voters. Now, we could.
I mean, I I just thought it, you you understand the rationale I had here, you know, and I was just wondering, hey, why can't they all be dealt with the same way? Also, I don't know, somebody with a twenty five foot boat is in theory having to pay for a forty foot.
No, that's that's the reason that it's done that way.
Yeah.
Is that those moorings, those.
Those.
Boat.
Yeah, the boats.
Take up the space of a forty.
I understand.
So I would like to see the town get paid for a forty five foot boat, even if the person who's renting it only has a twenty five.
Okay, okay, so it's an observation I make and but I was not aware of the subtlety or. Not so subtle difference between a between a mooring and a slip. So and.
Line his hand up for a minute now. Line, did you take your hand down? Anyone to comment?
Yeah, comment on that topic.
Well, I I was just going to say the boatyards have always paid. Uh annually, the waterway fee uh for their moorings. Uh, the intention was that they would continue to pay for. The waterway fee to the town for all of their service and transient moorings. And that the uh people who are assigned to the. Other moorings held by the boatyards would pay their waterway for their boat being in that spot. And then the agreement between those boaters and the boatyards, that's a that's a separate topic. But the town would collect a waterway fee for uh every single one of those. More in spots.
My concern there is that we're shorting the town because those things take up the space of two forty five foot boats, right?
Okay, all right. So I mean, that's just an observation. Appreciate the comments on that. Second, second question I had is. Um, to all of those folks that wind up on provisional uh moorings. They must pay their fee in full at the start of the season? Okay, we have to know that because that's really a financial interaction between.
The boatyard will let well, well, the boatyard will let the harbor master know if they don't have their payment.
Okay, all right. Just so long as it's in advance, there was some comment there with I think you had made the comment, Greg, with regard to. Billing disputes or problems with people who might be on moorings, and I don't, I certainly do not want the mooring fee to be. Part of that discussion. In other words, I'll pay you monthly and all of a sudden they don't pay it in August or something. Okay, and uh the last question I had, and I think it can be um straightened out, is that um. I guess moorings can be added or removed at, you know, each year. And it could be any number. I mean, they could reduce the number of service moorings they have. If they feel that we don't need to have, I don't know, eleven or eleven, whatever it is, whatever the number is. Okay, all right, but um. There could be uh if if something is removed. If a mooring is removed, it must be there for at least three years, and I understand that somebody.
The more recent draft says, when when I got the comments from Manchester Marine, they did not object to having keep a. Moring in the provisional mooring pool until the assignee had enough time to alter it, so.
Okay, all right, that is subsequent to this.
I.
Indefinitely?
Yes, indefinite. The there was, they saw and did not comment.
There or until vacated by an assignee?
Until it's vacated.
Now, when you say it, it could be any mooring. If they want to have another mooring back, whoever. Whatever person that's got a provisional mooring. It's it's a pool of moorings, and so whichever one gets vacated, they get that mooring back if they wanted to put it back into the service mooring category. And so it's not designated a specific mooring. It's whatever mooring becomes available first, then you've satisfied that requirement. That's not necessarily clear here, so there might be a word or two that needs to go in there, so.
Should we dumb this down? Please, so we're talking about moorings that the marinas control.
Yep, they have they have permits.
They have permits.
Yep.
And at times they would want, they the potential exists that it's become surplus, as it were. They don't need a mooring. Tying of boats and they could then uh go to the the pool of. So to the does do they pay for those moorings upfront?
Yes.
All right, so and the question I have is then. So the town's got their money. For those moorings, right? And then all they have to do is they can try to recoup some of those those dollars, amortize the cost of what it is for the months.
They're gonna make big profit on it, but.
Or, and I'm not a big advocate of government intervention here, but why can't we cap that? At like fifteen or twenty percent, basically the cost of their money administrative costs, because it is a town asset.
Well.
Those.
It is and it isn't.
Well, those those folks would be of no interest to anybody if they were in the. Boat yards parking lot.
It's a public asset, not necessarily a town asset.
Oh, okay, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just trying to think that. You don't want, you know, if it's, why can't the if the town is getting their money. Um, that's what we care about, but we don't want someone.
Yeah, the other problem is we're found by the state. Any seasonal moorings have to come from the list, that's.
Well, no, I understand that, but some of the concerns that you had, as I recall, is. All right, this is what the moor is gonna cost you. You're too uh too rich for your blood. We're going to someone else.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
The risk they run is if it's too high, they go through the whole list.
And they don't.
And they don't get, you know, there's some moorings that do not go.
Okay, no, I'm just I'm just I'm just trying to boil this down and simplify it as best.
That brings up a different issue, though. Moorings are rare and sought after, so we don't want to see moorings go unused. For multiple years at a time, right?
It wouldn't probably wouldn't be because they set the price every year, right?
I I'm just wondering if there's a way for buy on to um. You know, monitor that. We wouldn't want moorings to go empty, right, unused. Um. And I'm not sure how this addresses that angle.
Well, it's it since it's not capped, it's strongly in the boatyard's interest. To set a price where they will sell.
Yeah. That's all, and the market will determine.
I I I don't have a problem with that at all.
Right, I guess what I'm getting at is most marinas, like, you know, if you don't use your slip, you're you're allowed to have your slip empty for a year, and if you don't. Put a boat in it, the following year you'll lose the slip. So I'm wondering if that type of. You know, industry standard process can be applied here to the moorings. You you can't keep a mooring empty for two, three years. That's just. Okay, that's not right, you know.
So you're saying somebody's paying for it, but they're not using it?
Yeah. Um, and that's the scenario.
No, nobody would be paying for it.
Gonna pay for it by January fifteenth.
That's not what I'm concerned about. If P if moorings go unused, the list doesn't get any shorter, right?
On uh under what circumstances? You're you're concerned that the marinas will set a price so high that no one will.
I'm asking, is that, you know?
I think I think we have to go back. If if they don't get the X thousand dollars that they want out of it, that's not in their interest. They know they're gonna have to pay us the what, I don't know, two thousand dollars for the whatever forty foot boat is, fifteen hundred dollars or something.
The way I see it is they're gonna set it so much afoot, probably.
Yeah.
Whatever this slips are.
Right.
And if you go out there in July and August, there's not, there's not a bunch of empty slips out there, so.
I think what I'm worried about is the conversation or I think it might have been a recent update. I apologize. Think I got some of the updates mixed up, but there was something about keeping the mooring. Assignment until um. Almost except a regular mooring assignment offered by the harbor master. So basically someone keeping not keeping their mooring assignment um. Year over year over year. I just want to make sure that if that situation occurs, the person actually has a boat in the mooring. Not just keeping the assignment because they can afford to pay a fee. You know what I'm saying? Um, I wish I could apologize. I didn't have the language here.
You want to make sure that there's a boat on.
Make sure there's a boat on the mooring. So even if someone is paying the boatyard, some, these things are rare, right? People, there are some people willing to pay. Just because, oh, I'm gonna get a boat, you know, I didn't get it this year. I'm gonna get it next year, you know, lots of things happen with boats. I just don't want to see any empty.
I think buy on handles that the way he does all of the other.
That's why I didn't quite see that.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
Uh, so I I would say, Kathy, uh, the way to handle that is the same way we handle every other single mooring. If you have a mooring, you pay uh every single year. Uh, you must use your mooring at least every other year for forty five days.
Okay.
And we could just apply the same, I mean, I I would assume we just apply the same rule to those moorings as we would any other mooring in the harbor.
Yes, I'm I'm very comfortable with that. I didn't, I guess, maybe I didn't um pick up on this before, this branding of a provisional mooring program, which I like. Um, but I didn't see that language in here. I like that language. I'm perfectly fine if we just treat.
It's it's in the regular rules and regs. And uh we would just apply it consistently.
Right.
Okay, so what you're saying is that someone who had the. Someone who has paid. Uh, the boatyard for the use of a float space of the float space. Would lose it if they didn't put a boat out.
Every other year, yeah, for forty five days. Whatever the rule is, I just want the same rule to apply to these moorings.
So so the marina still holds onto the mooring, but the. Their sublettee.
Goes back into the pool.
Doesn't doesn't continue to read and the next person on the list has a chance.
Yes, yes, yes.
I guess that's the intersection of of what was here and.
Current rules.
Yes, yes, that's that's exactly right. Further discussion. Um, that's.
Thank you for putting all this together. Yeah, my only comment, which I already gave you, was about the threshold of the. Two percent.
Yeah, and I I.
Yeah, I saw you fix that, so that's. Yeah, so that's great, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Nick, ladies, fourteen Reservoir Road, Boston, Mass. General Manager, Manchester Marine. I'm curious what the two point five percent change to that, that's the. Virgin I'd seen.
Um, okay, what? We's I originally said that that we don't want to see the the um boatyards. Put up enormous changes, so is, okay, two and a half percent is a number of year over year increase that the town lives with. Um, so that's where that number came from, and Jeff suggested that maybe that wasn't, didn't reflect the cost of of. Material in the in the water and on the water. Material in the, in the water and on the water, um, so I added the percent change in the mooring fees. So that it would be two and a half percent plus whatever change the mooring fees had.
Oh, so that additionally.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood.
So if our mooring fees go, my, my concern was if our mooring fees go up twenty percent some year. You guys can still capture that twenty percent plus your two and a half.
Understood.
You know what I mean, so you wouldn't, yeah.
Don't throw that number out to buy it here.
Hey, um. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the provisional mooring program as.
Presented on January fifth.
Yeah.
The January fifth edition.
Version XXX, okay.
You would think somebody who'd done this before would have the sense to put in the date on.
With the addition of the, kind of what do you want to call it, the?
Use it or lose it provision.
Use it or lose it.
Okay.
That's in the general.
Which, yeah, so that's in the general.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Kathy says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, I think. The boatyards get, use moorings and the mooring, the users will come off the list in a rational fashion.
Thank you, thank you for putting that together.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah. Um. The next is discussion items. Um, the first item here is the waterfront event permit. Um. I have trouble dealing with things that I get late on Monday afternoon. And I don't think this is something that we absolutely urgently have to have done in January. Um, and I would like to put this off perhaps for two meetings. And I want to be sure that what we've come up with for a waterfront event permit. Um, others. Many, there, there are lots of events that happen on the harbor, the cardboard boat event. Um, and, and I'm not sure that the level of regulations that this proposes is appropriate for everything that happens on the waterfront. Like it's a little more. And I'd like a little bit of clarity on what is a waterfront event.
Right, the definition of a waterfront event.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the scope of applying whatever um rules we're gonna set up? Um. I think I had sent Greg a note this morning, uh, that I'd attended the meeting on the, that everybody, um, you know, came, where everybody came together to discuss options. Um, I didn't, it, this looked like a shortlist, but not everything that we talked about, so I wasn't sure what we were going to be discussing tonight. For example, we talked about if there were um public safety details, that the event sponsor would have to pay for them. That was one thing that stuck in my mind, so I just felt like this document to your point, um, it, it was a short list, but not necessarily everything we would want to discuss.
Among, among the things that concern me, there, there. The high school sailing team, for example, when they have races, they put it out on social media. It's an on-the-water event. Do we need to have the coast guard involved, so?
If they're a good team, no.
Um, so. I will.
So the definition of the event is the.
It's a good point.
Um, and, and there's every April or so, Bayon does a really good event where people bring in. Uh, expired flares, and you get to play with flares, which most people don't get to do in the north.
Know about that, Ben.
Yeah, uh, and, and it's.
And all of those things.
So.
Okay.
Anybody like?
I have a problem with this, I mean, like you said, this would, would not press for time right now.
No, and I, I, it wasn't clear to me how this kind of gets integrated into the special event permit.
Well, it's massage that particular.
You have to massage it a lot, I would think, because I mean, it, I would say there's a crossover, but.
I think Bayon and Cheryl would have to work.
They would.
Okay. Oh. We'll all send our comments to Greg.
Mm hmm.
And uh, take this one up later.
Okay, off the water, um, Cape and Transportation Authority.
Right.
Hmm, so we've had discussions in the past, uh, we had a meeting with head representatives come in. Uh, and I think it's, it's decision time in terms of would we like to proceed? Uh, they're, they're willing and able to uh to offer us some services. Um, it's, as you know, it'd be a shifting of dollars, so the dollars that we currently pay to the MBTA. You're allowed to shift that to your local regional transit authority, so it's, it's not new dollars, it's just taking existing dollars and shifting it. It's KDA instead of MBTA, um, and I think there's a way to supplement uh our current. Um, services to offer as an expansion of, of service. So if, if you're willing to take the next steps, I would have KDA draft up a formal proposal. That will then have them come back before you, and it is um a decision of the select board to, to make that move. Um, so you can review their proposal and then make a decision at that time. So if you have some thoughts on the shape of the, the service, uh, that would be helpful to, to have. Um, they presented a couple, three options the last time they were here. Um, so we can find two notes and have you make a final decision.
As I recall, and I'm looking at the, the notes from, when were they, in August fifth, I guess it was, three days is what we could get.
Yes.
And it's, it would fit in, and any more than that, now it becomes incremental to us.
Right.
But that, that was less than whatever we're, what is it, a hundred and fifty thousand we're paying the MBTA?
Thirty.
Three days is cost like, I don't know, a hundred and ten or something, something less, so that's what would be three, three days of service, obviously, I think it can be any three we. Notice, but that's a little bit further down the road.
Yeah, and then I think at that point, once we know what those three days of service are, COA can then start adjusting their schedules.
I think the key thing was, is then we can adjust schedules and run a little bit, in the summer anyway, run to like six o'clock or something.
Right, and then we would supplement it with our own bands to expand.
Yeah.
Daily hours.
Correct. Yep.
Seems like a no brainer to me.
Yeah. So consensus is yes, Greg, please go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, the community center.
Um, shout out if you want to shout. Yeah, I'll, I'll start, I, uh, actually, after we spoke, Greg, on Thursday, I ran it to Edward.
Okay.
He's on board, let's just do it. I can order the girl, we want to use the building.
Right, so we have certainly spoken in the past about using that building for.
Public bathrooms?
Public bathrooms is number one.
Yeah. Welcoming center.
Welcoming center.
Yeah.
And then.
Uh, Harbor Master Office.
At least, I'd like to see that as a temporary fix for the Harbor Masters office, my ultimate goal would see the Harbor Masters office on the harbor.
Uh huh, yeah.
We're, we're working real hard to, to create a first-class waterfront, I mean, uh. Yeah, Harbor Masters office is, ought to be a chronic jewel, but it certainly is in the right direction, so, but maybe it's a winter office, depending on what we uh have designed, whatever the design comes out.
Yeah.
Regarding the um.
And it can be used for other events and other groups.
Park and rec.
I certainly manage that.
Uh, coming up with some other items, shuffleboard.
Could be generic office that could be used for other things down the road, so that, that's fine. What's, what's the, there's gonna be some budgetary consideration in all of this, because this is a lease or something, yes?
Well, yes, uh, I've been told it will be very user-friendly, we haven't talked real numbers at this point, we had one number, and I told them that didn't work. So uh, so I think we're in the thousand, fifteen hundred dollar range, is, I think that's what we talked about, Greg?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay.
And we'll just confirm that with.
But it's incremental to our budget.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it is, yes.
But that's not a crazy.
No.
That's, I think that's real.
What about as far as retrofitting it to?
Yeah, leasehold improvements?
That's, that's uh, that's a discussion we can have with the landlord, uh, obviously, he can do it cheaper than we can do it.
Yeah.
Um, and I, two years ago, when we first had this, when the museum center first came into the discussion mode. He was willing to pay for the uh, the public restrooms.
Okay.
Uh, whether or not that's still on the table, I don't know, I think we kicked around, they went to put in thirty and fifty thousand dollars, I think, to, to do. The right way of ADA compliance and uh restrooms there. So that's, I think that at some point, once we have the decision, we're gonna do this, then we can ask Nate to, to just do some preliminary budgeting on that. And get it, uh, an idea, maybe a rough sketch idea, we can get over to uh Edward and see if he can do it cheaper, which he can, he'll do it with his own people after it comes to that.
So just a question, um, I know we had talked about a welcoming center, but I thought at one point the museum had also. Or the historicals, you know, had entertained the concept of a welcoming center there, so. I guess I don't want to interfere with something that either might already be in process, or I just think we need to take that into consideration. Um, what was the museum proposing versus what we might be able to do at the community center? Public bathrooms, to me, are a no-brainer, we've been screaming for that for years, but when it comes to the welcoming center. If the museum has staffing available, it, that actually might be a better.
Seems like a better place.
My recollection with. Yeah, well, my recollection of that, that, that came out of the first carnival, first uh.
Right.
And they, I guess behind the museum, I haven't seen it, there's a bathhouse, or what is, what is it?
Yes.
Yeah, one of the beach.
The idea was to move it over to Mascanomo.
Ah, okay.
All right, and then they realized that's not possible.
Tough to get it in there.
Uh, but as a well, you know, like a nice, but uh, it's certainly something that we can.
I just think we need to discuss that and figure that out, and, and then my, my third recommendation would be, we really should go back to the facilities strategy the Chuck outlined. Um, what other uses for that space, you know, what other uses or space do we need? And, and where would that building be a good match, so we shouldn't have to think of it off the fly, it should be part and parcel, something mentioned in the plan.
The other, I think of that as more of a flexible space.
Absolutely, but.
And, and, and right now, we have eight more space for seniors. We have acquired senior space.
Right.
But it's some years from being fully functional, I think, we have, you have to do full fundraising, and so. In the short term.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just suggesting that we not forget that we had a facilities strategy, we should incorporate that thinking broadly into whatever. This is another asset we need to include in that strategy and be thoughtful about.
Uh.
A short term or long term, how we want to use it, that's all.
Yeah, but I think to your point, I mean, the senior center is probably uh eighteen months to two years away. I think if we approach uh fundraising differently, we can be in the ground real soon. And uh, if not, we're looking at four years as opposed to two years, so. But in the interim, I mean, the con, you have your, where do you have your coffees over the church, a church?
Yeah, that's been running for, I guess, a year, and, well, not a year and a half, but over a year, that's good.
I feel comfortable, if they like it there, they're comfortable there, but if they want to move over.
It's going along fine.
It became, this became the genesis of the whole thing was senior coffees, this is how this whole thing blew up with senior coffees. All right, and if Jay Sabalk can see senior coffees out his window, he'll be happy.
Okay. So.
No.
I will make, I will make us, uh, I will catch with Edward in the next couple of days, and then you and I will sit with him.
Yeah.
All right, we'll have a lot of agreement to bring back to people.
It sounds terrific. Okay, the town's administrator recruitment preliminary screening committee. Um. What do you need to do on that?
So just a, a quick update, we should have the draft profile um by the end of this week.
Mm hmm.
Um, so we, ideally, we turn that around quickly, so that uh this gets out on the street at the end of next week, the goal. Um, so if, if, assuming I get it on Friday, I give it all to you, if you could get me any comments back. Um, then I can coalesce those and send them right back to them, um, so to, to be fine on Monday, assuming that I get it on Friday, that, that would be very helpful. Um, and then, yeah, as I say, it'll, it'll be officially advertised on the street. And also. Okay. In a conference called Connect three fifty-one, um, that happens over the, on the.
Fourth.
Third.
Third, third week of January.
Yeah, that's, that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, third week of January. Um. And so in addition to that, uh, we have received a number of names for people interested in serving on the, on the screening, preliminary screening committee. And, um, and I were talking, and, and she felt perhaps that inviting the moderator to serve on that committee as well might be.
So, yeah, be, before we start talking names, I don't think we've really had a discussion on what we're looking for regarding the um. Townwide residents who might serve, and I also suspect that we'll have more former mem, former select board members than we have slots, so I, I think it's customary to. Not talk about names, but talk about criteria, what are we looking for before we entertain a discussion on, you know, names.
Right, so the, ideally, you would make the selection at your next meeting on the.
Right, so I think we need to talk criteria now, that's one of my points, for example, uh, we did discuss. When talking about prior select board members, it would be nice to have select board members who have gone through the process, right? Uh, that might be a preferred candidate, if we had, you know, five former select board members, and, you know, one or two of them have gone through this before, that, that might be nice, right? You could apply something similar to that to the residents at large, someone who has experienced um selecting leaders. Or hiring leaders versus individual contributors, so that's, that's what I mean by criteria, just as a point of explanation.
Because you've been sitting in that chair way too long, uh, the, it might be nice to find someone who remembers working with a different town administrator.
Well, that's, that's the point here.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Three to ten years.
So, I mean, we're talking, how long have you been here?
Ten, one.
Ten years?
It'll be twelve.
Yeah. All right, so that's.
So.
People with history.
Like when I was speaking to uh. Who was I speaking to? The gentleman.
Doesn't matter, no names.
Uh, no, no, uh, on the, the, uh, from the.
Oh, the pebbin.
Yeah.
The pebbin.
Petron.
Petron, petron.
I, I, I can't, I don't know anything other than what I've experienced the last two and a half years, I don't know what else to look for. Okay, and even the same conversation I have with uh Ms. Kingin today. I only know what I know.
I think that dovetails, though, what, what we talked about the last time, if someone has gone through this process before, they worked with a prior town administrator when they hired Greg, for example, or they worked with a prior. Administrator before they hired Greg's predecessor, so I think that's exactly.
But I think there's also some merit having people who work closely with Greg.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, which is everyone.
But I think that we're, we're included in that, that cohort, and we're making the ultimate decision, so. Um, I think the screening committee is an opportunity to get different thinking, and as long as it's a diverse group of different thinkers.
Hmm.
Um, but I do think experience is helpful, either having hired leaders in the private sector or, and or having gone through this process before, um. Hiring a town administrator.
I will add, Greg, I think your opinion carries a lot of weight here.
Absolutely.
Because you're the one that's gone through this personally, for a career.
Right.
And gone through those changes, and I'd be interested, you put some pen to paper and say, here. And gone through those changes and I'd be interested, you put some pen to paper and say here are a couple of aspects.
To what I think you should.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Plus you'll be involved in a uh deeply involved transition.
That's what I mean, he's he's gone through it and he says this is how they made the decisions, and of course, everyone was the right one that you went to, or maybe not. No, I'm not gonna make sure. Okay.
So is that something um because I do think it's important we have some criteria in front of us before we talk names at the next meeting, so is that something you wanna send to us? Um as far as draft criteria or whatever, in an email or I just just trying to understand the process here. What, when does the screening committee actually have to be stood up by?
So they should be functional mid-February.
Functional mid-February, okay. So for example, another criteria we might consider is, is it important for them to, remember we talked about this in the past? Be here physically to conduct interviews of potential candidates, or is you know, Zoom acceptable if they happen to be a snowbird? I don't know if any snowbirds have applied, but um so that might be a criteria we need to discuss. Do we care?
I have my feelings on that. I I I think that a lot is lost on Zoom.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
I think that uh you can read an awful lot about a person face to face, look in the eye, burn in the eye, and I if I had my druthers, I would stay with them soon.
So preference might be for people who can be here in person, physically be here, okay, so that's another example criteria. Experience. Particular type of experience you might consider.
How are we gonna get to the experience thing, because I mean, we don't know everything everybody's done over their lifetime.
But this is my point, right, so if there's something we wanna know.
I think the people who find give you a resume.
Well, I don't.
Okay, a letter of intent is what was requested, a letter of interest.
Letter of interest, yeah.
Yes. So so Greg is saying, the assumption is we will interview them, like we do the candidates for other committees. So we'll get an opportunity to ask them those questions.
Well, let's go through it one by one.
Right, so my my only suggestion is we should kind of think about what those questions are in advance, so we're not looking at a person we know and really like and find out they're not the right.
As I suspect, everybody on the list, we know.
I suspect everybody on the list we know and like.
You know, probably.
Between the five of us, we all know somebody.
Right.
I think all of us probably know all of the folks, you know, I just think I know what the list is.
I think perhaps what we like to consider is doing the interviews in one meeting and perhaps maybe having an interim meeting if if the schedule requires it, so that we talk to the people and think about it for a few days, rather than having to make the decision.
Yeah, that's.
I think this isn't too important to uh.
Hey, what's the future of the town, right, exactly.
It's the most important decision we'll make this year.
I'm willing to cut about a couple more hours of my time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a couple.
So we're going to get Greg's recommendations, why don't Kathy has given us several good ideas. Any suggestions to Greg? And then Greg.
Alright, you can consolidate that with.
Yeah.
Whatever else you got.
It is, it is fair.
So are we suggesting then that we would begin to interview candidates at our meeting on the twenty first? That I'm just, I'm just.
That's what I was assuming, I mean, you you could have a special meeting to do the interviews.
I prefer to say a special meeting. I think it's, I I don't.
So right now we have like eight or nine candidates.
That's gonna take up a good part of the night. Do it right.
Yeah, you're doing ten minutes a person, which is short.
I I think I'd like to find. How many, how many Mondays do we have?
Well, so if I could suggest, maybe at the next.
Next Monday is a planning board meeting of some significance. But maybe we could do it on Thursday.
Yeah, I was gonna just gonna suggest that our next meeting be on refining the criteria, like you're gonna consolidate what the feedback that we give you. We wanna have a discussion on that before we start talking to people, because what we might wanna do is once we go through Greg's list with our enhancements, give that to the nine people who have sent letters, I mean, here's what we're looking for, you may have some people that self-select out, or at least they will be better prepared for the interview, right?
So.
So a special meeting.
After the twenty first.
Up to the twenty first.
Twenty third or the thirtieth.
Are you going to the MMA, the connect twenty one on the night of the twenty thirds?
Yeah.
Twenty third doesn't.
Yeah, twenty third's not working either.
I can do the thirtieth.
You can't do the twenty seven?
What is?
Like, is that a Monday? I know it's a planning board meeting on the twenty seventh, but.
Planning board, that kind of meets twice a month, so twenty seventh should be okay.
Oh, should be open.
Yeah.
So that's a Monday night, the twenty seventh is that?
Yeah, that's.
Doable?
That's doable.
That's a good day.
Planning board is a meeting twenty seven?
Second fourth.
Second fourth.
Second and fourth, okay, so right, no.
I mean, I could, I could do the thirtieth, I just wasn't sure if Monday was up to.
Okay, meet earlier.
I can do the thirtieth.
Well, the twenty seventh, I mean, but we're talking, we do it early, how early is early and we're talking a couple of hours, right?
Yeah.
I just rather than try to do early and try to get it done before something else, I prefer to have it all over the night until the thirtieth.
Yeah, I I prefer, yeah, I can't meet too early on the twenty seventh, I can regular time.
Thirty is a good why, so that's a, that's a fifth Thursday, that's a fifth Thursday, you know, once you get into the fifth of any.
Okay, as that, that will work with the schedule.
Yes, yes, uh so then then you would have a regular meeting that following Monday where you could make the the decisions, make the selection.
Brilliant.
Whoa.
Hang on a second, I thought so, I'm sorry.
We still need some time to talk about what the criteria are.
Right, so which date are we?
We're done on the twenty first.
That's the twenty first.
Twenty first, okay, sorry.
And then you meet on the thirtieth to do the interviews.
So interviews are on the thirtieth.
And then on February third, your regular meeting, which is when you would make your actual selections.
Okay.
May or may not be here.
So what time are we meeting on the?
In British Columbia, skiing somewhere.
Oh, are you?
No, on the the week of uh February first, so I leave the first and I'm going for the week.
Okay, but I don't think we'd be pulling you off the slopes early.
You wouldn't, except that I'm in a car, cause I'm moving around in various.
We've been asking for.
So I don't, yes. These are very irreverent people I ski with. So we'll see, we'll see what happens.
So we talk from six thirty or for the uh thirtieth?
Six thirty works for me.
That's on the thirtieth? Yeah.
Hope you're a Riverdance skaters could have a beer while you're.
That's easy convince. I think it worked, if Monday I had nowhere. Not a long, not a long drive.
Okay, so we've got a schedule for criteria, a schedule for interviews, a schedule for decision.
So if we just, people have thoughts on criteria, why don't you give them? Two days. Put together a list.
And I mean, I will ask Alan if he'd like to be involved. If that's, if Alan has a long history with the town.
Yeah, he's seen a couple of teams.
That sounds like.
Yeah, no, it is.
I I I don't, I don't know whether he's going to be interested, but that, as Greg pointed out, we bring committee eight, so there's possibly a deadlock, I think if we have a deadlock in that committee, then we need to do it harder, can't it?
Alan would have the longest perspective of every.
Right.
Okay. Please, some updates.
Nothing, I got something. DPW, I think we should all be aware uh on the water meter issue. The RFP that Chuck is sending out for, I guess, three or four bids to come in on supplying the waters, that's, he expects to send that out this week. That's gonna come back over the next two or three weeks, I think the bottom line is, is that the water bills that go out in February will have, will start to have this twenty five dollar hit for a water meter that nobody has. Yes. Okay, so there may be some calls that will be coming in, hey, what's this twenty five dollar bill, nobody's doing anything, what am I getting for my month? So I think we need to be aware of that. I know that the DPW department probably will, because there will be a few people that will call. But uh just need to be aware of that. The library will get its decision Friday on whether it wins.
Is it supposed to be announced Friday?
Supposed to be announced Friday.
Okay.
And we are one of, I think, I think are gonna be two winners. I think there are five applicants in our size category.
In our category.
In our category, and I think maybe there's, there might be two or something, but it's competitive, let's just say. That's it, so we'll know, the library will know how things fit together for, this is money for um the planning stage for the library uh rehab, et cetera. And nothing with the seniors in particular, and the historic commission meets this Thursday, it's nothing, no further news with regard to what's going on at at uh the cargo.
Except it's empty.
Except it's empty, so something will happen, we thought they might come back to us this month.
Uh based, and I I had an opportunity to chat with Sarah at Asco before the ZB, cause they're changing you.
Uh it's a change of use, although that use is on the list, but just because you're changing, it's not.
She has to see, she hasn't seen anything.
So I understand, yeah. So that's two, it's got the district commission and uh and then.
Yeah, anything?
Uh nothing, Thursday night, I will be at Essex Tech for the grand opening of the um Black and Cottage. Yeah, it's finally pretty much done, yeah. Been a long-term project for the kids and whatnot, so hopefully I'll get some pictures and post them, but uh yeah, should be a good event, so.
Box and records running like a, running like a top.
Okay. The consent agenda? I moved that we approved the consent agenda. John?
Yes.
Yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Administrators.
Well, yeah, just a few, few updates. Uh we we will have the fighting review uh to next meeting, it's been a little more talking to me and Todd and Cheryl. Get everyone on the same page, they can go ahead and have an presentation ready, so we'll have that, wait, you know, the twenty first. Uh we're anxious to get the final sign-offs for the Colbert project here, um so that we can move forward. Well, we were there, but um so we continue to work on that, it's a priority, and um I hope to have better news next time.
Have there at least been meetings, cause I thought at one point we had difficulty getting the lawyer or the party?
There are at least some communications happening.
Deadline again, before we lose six million dollars?
So it's not a hard and fast deadline, but we will, if we don't push the permitting process through, we will lose the timing to for fall construction. If we don't start construction, the fall, that jeopardizes the fund. So I can't say definitively we use it, but it puts it into question.
I think Nate says he's gotta go out to bid soon.
Right. Right, and we can't go out to bid until we know what the permit requirements are.
So do we have any more clarity as to what the business owner is looking for?
So, um I believe we have responded positively to everything that have asked for.
Are new things getting added every time we respond, or are they not understanding our response, or are they not agreeing with our response?
They're not agreeing, they're not agreeing to what we have said, and we don't understand why. We do not have clarity as to what the problems.
I had a conversation with her a few days before Christmas, and it sounded like this was all set, so I'm kinda surprised that.
The Friday before Christmas, I thought it was all set, and then Christmas Eve, I was told by her lawyer that, no, it's the deal's off. And I wasn't told why. So there's been further communication since then, and we've asked for a definitive redlining of what we last proposed.
Yeah.
Asked for that for tomorrow or Wednesday. That's where it's.
Alright, will keep us. I guess.
I'm not understanding.
Yeah, I don't either, cause I talked to her. Sounds like it was ready to go, so.
And and again, if if the preference is to do more talking about the easement, all we need for now is the chapter ninety one form side. We can take more time on the easement, but the desire was to wrap it all up, which we were happy to do.
Right, right. And that's, I got the impression from her that she was too, but maybe, I don't know what happened, so. I can't speak to that, but.
So I'm very anxious that this come together, cause there's a lot riding on it. Eight, eight years of work on this project.
Yeah, I mean, um, yeah, it's gonna go back to them.
I.
I'm already, and it's aware of this whole situation.
Oh, yeah, I heard it well, yeah.
Do they have a feeling?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't have to say.
Yeah, no, it's that my brush put it that way, and I wasn't gonna argue when we had a pair of sisters in here.
Constituency that would be helpful here or not.
You're thinking maybe this week and then.
But when is the deadline you gave her, Wednesday? I'm sorry, I.
So you were gonna meet with the.
Tenth was the deadline I gave them.
For the red line?
For for a deal.
Red deal.
So we've asked for, the lawyer said he'll try to get a red line to us by the end of business tomorrow.
Okay.
At this point, you just have a request to meet, but you do not have a response from them.
So the lawyer came back and said, I mean, next Thursday, the sixteenth. And I said, that's too late. We need it sooner than that.
Okay, and that's where it stands right now, so you're looking for another date?
So and then he said he would try to get a red line version to us to find out the business tomorrow.
Okay, is this the first time we've had a red line from them?
We have never had a red line, we keep giving them versions, and they keep saying, uh.
Okay, so this is the first, so this is progress, because they've actually, the lawyer actually said he would get a red line by tomorrow, and that's, that's not, that is something they have never said before. Okay, so that's you take the win where you can, but but it's not a win, but it's a step in the right direction, but I I think, alright, so.
So have asked the engineers to see if there's an alternative, that avoids the property altogether.
Yeah.
They're working on that as well.
Good, okay.
So. We'll see.
Plan B is always good.
Yeah.
Look, if you let us know if you don't have something this week.
Yes, I'll, I'll keep you posted. I'll keep you posted.
How likely is a plan B?
Yeah. And do they know there's a plan?
I think they will know.
I mean, that's, that's.
There, there, there's a finite amount of space between.
Right, um. Uh. Chuck's comment earlier today was, you know, anything's, anything's interoperable, it's just a matter of cost.
Nice.
So, um. I'll compare that cost to. The delay, and I mean, it'd be worth it.
Yeah.
By the price.
Yeah. Absolutely.
If it's a clear go.
Yep.
I don't, I mean, with a reason, I don't care how much for it costs.
It's not gonna be six million dollars, probably. Yeah, okay.
They should, at some point, they should know this.
That's. See if I get confirmation.
Well, that was, that was, that became the first thing, then it was, then I was reading the draft agreement. And dedicated parking and all kinds of stuff.
It just, it just keeps, the goalpost keeps.
Yeah, so I like the plan B option, I hope that works.
Yeah.
What did, give it back a little bit.
James.
Well, we'll see. Yeah, I don't, you know, I mean, this, it's, it's confusing at best.
Yeah.
Salting it worst.
It. We're, we're talking less than a hundred square feet. For, for permanent, it's, it's.
Yeah.
We could do away with half of that, we could get away with fifty square feet. So. Maybe we can eliminate that last fifty square feet.
Try real high.
Five by ten here, that's what we're talking about. Say two.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, obviously, annual town meeting, uh, the elections are scheduled. April twenty-eighth for the, uh, annual town meeting, which means the deadline for petition articles is February twenty-seventh. Sixty days ahead.
So what was it?
Petition articles are due February twenty-seventh. Yeah. And, uh, the election will be, um, the twentieth is the date. And, uh, papers are now available for the various positions that are open. We have, uh, housing. I don't know, stay, stay, stay firm.
And downstairs. And downstairs, get your papers.
I got told, Kristy, I'll, I'll get my papers as well.
Yes, I will be as well.
So we have, uh, three constables.
Very good news.
So the three constable positions are up, uh, the housing authority has one slot, as does the library, trustees. We all know the moderator position will be vacant and open. There are three.
Any, is there any interest at all? Have you heard any kind of?
No one has come to me to talk about it. So I think that's one that deserves some attention, uh, some conversations. Proper. Uh, free planning board positions, and then two. Two more members here.
Free planning board?
Free planning. Because one was a.
What about school committee?
Oh, I'm sorry, and, and two school committees. Yep.
Indivisional and our respects.
So. That's, that's where we are, uh, there is, because we have changed town meeting, the data.
It's later.
Forward, it's later, closer to the election. Close enough that you can have one warrant. We have always had two warrants. A warrant for the town meeting and a warrant for the. The election. Um, so tradition says we keep, we stick with the two war approach. You, you can consolidate, create one warrant. It means one registration date, last day for regist- registering to be on the voter list.
Okay, so what that means is, if we have one warrant, we would be excluding some people from the election, who would otherwise be able to vote in the election.
It would be a, us, an earlier registration deadline than we're used to.
Yeah. Yeah.
For, for elec- for election.
For the.
So we can keep it the same, there's no, there's no, uh.
Is there any? Cost savings to the town? Minimum?
Minimal.
Okay.
None.
But if it was phenomenal or something like that, we want to, but. My miss was success.
Yeah.
It, it, it means, I think, that we, does it mean that we can reflect the decisions of town meeting in the one? So for example, if we have a borrowing.
But no. I mean, those, those have to be. The, uh.
Ballot?
The ballot articles need to be set prior to our town meeting.
Essex seems to be able to do that.
Yeah, basically, you put it out, assuming it's gonna pass, and if it doesn't pass, you. It just becomes a moot issue, you know, you don't count the vote, people vote on it at the ballot.
And this is, so annual, it's. Ten signatures per a, uh, citizen petition?
Yes.
And, and what does the warrant have to be finalized, just in case?
So the warrant gets finalized, it has to be posted by the April seven. Check that. First, early April is the one. Final deadline.
Three weeks.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-one days, a few weeks.
Six and one halves.